We're not going to be done anything and I'll try to set it up. And then you're welcome to leave after that unless you want to hang out.
Well, we were last on new business last night, so this better.
We're on the evening last.
Seven o'clock, we'll call them any to order and I'll start with the questionable agents.
I want to be agents to defy about the United States of America. It's usually repelling for which is Saint Anne's. One invasion, one error, god, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Nathan, do we have anybody on Zoom?
One person.
Okay, if you could review the Zoom instructions. And also like remind everybody here at the table to make sure your microphone is on and that when you speak, you speak into the microphone. So when there's recordings, we can capture everything that was stated and so our audience member online can also hear. Nathan, you want to do this?
Yeah, beginning of July first, there was a new. Well, put in place that all recording, all meetings have to be recorded. And this, we do this through the Zoom process. We also have a YouTube channel that we started. Then we download all of our council meetings too. And you can find that address right on the agenda on the front page and that will have all of our recorded meetings up there.
Great, thanks Nathan. And roll call, start with you Guy.
Guy Rogers, street and utility superintendent. Brad Slosser, member at large, ninety-five, header drive. MRP member, Ward two, one twenty-six Lakeside Court.
Molly Weber, member at large, eight twenty-two, South Clear Lake Drive.
Burger Elliott, member, Ward three, ten fifty-eight, South Clear Lake Drive.
George Channel, council member, Ward one, one forty-four, West Clear Lake Drive.
Nathan Schrader, career president, seventy-three, South Blue River.
For summer, now more.
Thanks, everybody. Um, I think you all have the agenda in front of you and for the audience, you see it up on the screen. I will entertain a motion to move forward with the agenda as it's presented.
I would make the motion to approve the agenda as written.
This is Brandon, I'll second that.
Excellent, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. We'll now move forward with the approval of the monthly reports. Nathan has shared the July fifteenth council meeting minutes. Did everybody get their corrections in and have they been captured? Mine have. And if everybody's good with it, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes as presented.
This is George, I move that we took the minutes as presented.
This is Dan, I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Nathan, we'll have you present the July and August voucher, please.
Thank you, President. This voucher runs from July fifteenth through August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five. On this day, uh, on this voucher, you'll find three pay files, which is a little bit unusual for you guys to see on here. Another thing that you'll see, if you go down to August fifth, DLZ, there was a forty-eight hundred dollar charge for our two thousand twenty-five CCNG survey. On the next page, at the very last, on MBH side, uh, there is a nine hundred ninety-eight dollar charge for batteries. That's a little unusual. That is for Chris and that was for the other. Yeah, the developers. On the sewer side, there are a few charges listed out. We have some new grinders that came in from TriStar for thirty-six thousand dollars. We have the service body from Clyde. These are all August fifth ones, it was like. Our Clyde truck is sixty thousand nine forty-two, that's for the service body. And, uh, Guy just informed me that we are sending the truck back to warranty tomorrow because there is a issue with crane.
Crane, the parts came in.
And that's going to be on my email tomorrow. Um, the last thing is there are two different charges on here from Brian Ford for three different charges in public. These are all injunction appeals and they're for June, July. So on this voucher, I'm looking for approval for two hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred fifty-five dollars and eighty-five cents. If you have any questions, I'll take them now.
Nathan, I had, uh, I had three late today questions. Two of them are recommendation report came by the number. Do you consider very, you make those changes?
I have those changes on before that we're inside.
Okay, just so council knows that with the August fifth transaction. Income number two, one, four, eight, five, Truman Whitlock. Uh, it is being, uh, in the initial report, it was, uh, that has an MBH expense. Uh, number is actually, uh, on the general, so maybe recommendations change that. Uh, we had an August seventh transaction, uh, invoice two, one, four, nine, nine with family nap. Uh, this is listed as equipment repair or for shop. There is a, uh, phone number, thirteen sixty-two is listed, but thirteen sixty-one is for shop repairs. And then I flagged an August fifteenth, twenty-one, five, thirteen charge to MBH, uh, fuel and tires. That was listed as car wash. I had a question, is that a true car wash for the five fifty?
No, that's for police.
Okay, so you'll make the appropriate, yeah. Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Nathan, the voucher? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion, um, to approve with the corrections that Dan stated.
Well, Nathan, I made a motion to approve about her as written with the state changes. Spring, and I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Nathan.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to new business. We do have guests in the audience, um, the. They have Michael and Todd from Frontier Communications and they are going to be speaking about the fiber optic. Um, and what they're doing here at Clear Lake. So what I'd like to do is open it up for, um, public comment and when we do public comment, this will include council. As well as the audience and then when the discussion is done, we will close. So I will entertain a motion to open for public comment.
I would make a motion to open, uh, this discussion for public comment.
Thank you, Dan.
This is Bernard, I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Michael and Todd, do you want to step to the podium? And for the audience, this one, Nathan will be, and Michael, just let, uh, Nathan know when you want him to be in the slides.
Hey, good evening. Uh, we appreciate the opportunity to come up and share our, uh, overall plans for. By fiber to the home or fiber to the product here, clearly, customers. And, uh, my name is Mike Wookiee, Vice President of External Affairs, Frontier, for Indiana, Michigan and Ohio. With me is Todd Payne. He's the Construction Manager for Indiana. Uh, so you can go ahead and do the first slide. So, uh, we are in the process of upgrading all of our, uh, networks across the state, across the three states that I manage. Uh, literally hundreds of communities, we're out spending our own money. Uh, we got everything we could out of our copper product, uh, you know, it's great product for voice for a lot of years. I started in GTE in nineteen eighty-seven. And, uh, was, at one point, my career managed operations in the Midwest. Um, and then, uh, went to Verizon and then Frontier, um, leading operations in Texas, Florida and the Midwest. Uh, before stepping into this role, but I've been around the fiber to the home products since its rollout by Verizon, Texas. This is a fantastic product and we're very good at it and. Rolled out of fiber so, in so many places and, uh, and within this project's been going on for three years in these three states. Uh, but it's, it's actually improved in just in the last three years. I mean, three years ago, our top was three gig. Uh, then it was five gig, last year now it's seven gig. So, uh, fiber is a, a great product, uh, for providing the data. Uh, that customers demand nowadays for all the things that they do on data. Uh, but, you know, this first slide, very fast speeds, two hundred meg, it starts with up to seven gig for a customer. Um, it's a symmetrical product, meaning it's seeing upload and download speeds, something we learned in Verizon, um, DSL product, which we had before our copper lines. Had a very slow upload speed and faster download speed. Uh, and this is true speed with, uh, with the copper product. Well, you know, you may have signed up for a speed, but if you're any distance away from our product equipment at all, your speed would fall off. Uh, quite a bit. This is whatever you sign up for, you're going to get on fiber. We really think fiber is the future. We know that wireless is out here. Uh, rolling out, uh, five G services in, in various areas. Five G on wireless doesn't stand for five gig, it stands for fifth generation. And the average speed on five G connections is about a hundred and twenty meg. So, you know, we, you know, our bottom speeds doing a lot much faster than, than that. So we provide a lot of additional services during COVID, you know, we had a lot of, uh, people working from home. My daughter, who's a kindergarten teacher in Brownsburg, actually lived in my house in Fort Wayne and zoomed her, her classes over the, you know, the internet. Um, so, you know, it's, it's become a very important part of everybody's life. And fiber is a great connection. So again, I managed operations. For a lot of years, I didn't sleep very much when I had Texas Florida Midwest because there's always a storm going on in one of those areas. And with the copper network, short grounds crosses, uh, were common anytime it kind of moisture hit the plant, fiber's not that way unless you cut it, it works. As soon as we rolled out fiber in all my areas, my need for rolling up trouble reports dropped enough. Uh, so it's a very, very reliable product. The most, uh, uh, track rules were for video related services. Most of those people couldn't figure out how to program their phones. Uh, so let's go ahead and move. We're going to be serving seven hundred and fifty, uh, customer locations. This product's available for business residential customers. And it is voice and data only, not TV. We do have a partnership with YouTube TV. Uh, should, you know, if you be searching for, okay, I have a fast data connection, who do I want to pair with? You know, Apple TV, Hulu Plus, uh, YouTube TV. We do have a relationship with YouTube TV to get a discount. Or, uh, if you choose that service. I have YouTube TV in my home. I've had it for three years in Fort Wayne and, uh, I get every sports channel you can imagine, Big Ten Network, any of them. Uh, and my wife gets three home channels to show her half as well. So, uh, it's good service. Um, and you just have to have a fast data connection. Uh, super fast speeds, better reliability, already mentioned, a lot of electrics. Whatever speed you sign up for, the speed you get, you'll, I have some pictures of the equipment that we're putting out in the network. It's smaller than the copper equipment that went out and passed. And, and, uh, we'll skip the rest of those bottom slides. So let's move forward. Let me through this quickly. We have some pictures of the equipment or points, so. Okay, so the architecture, uh, we start in our central office where we put our electronics in, the, the read the light. Uh, from there, we run out to distribution points and we set hubs and these hubs are located in geographic areas. They can serve up to three hundred and thirty customers, but, uh, we, we set them where we can reach a, a, a set geographical area. So I don't, not sure, I don't know if you know Todd, how many hubs we're setting in this bill?
I think there's three, three in Clear Lake.
Yeah.
No, no, I remember sitting sure.
Okay. That makes sense because I mean, with, with the size of this bill, you don't really need that anymore. Uh, but this is where our technicians stop by and connect the feeder fiber to the distribution fiber that go out to the homes. Um, we follow the architecture that we have at our copper plant. So we've been the incumbent local exchange carrier. For, for voice for a lot of years, um, and, uh, so we had aerial, uh, facilities already in place, some buried facilities in place. And we follow that architecture with the fiber. And the, the cool thing about it is, is, uh, we're not adding new attached poles. Uh, we have a relationship with Nitsco up here. Uh, we are simply spinning our fiber cable to the copper cable. So it's quick and easy, it's fast. We can get in and out of communities in a couple of months and by having this build this size. Uh, I think we're about ninety percent aerial. It's very customer unintrusive. So we're not digging things up, tearing things up. We have a little bit of buried, you'll see on the map. Uh, but it's predominantly aerial, uh, which is quick and easy and very unintrusive for customers. So we, we place terminals out here and a lot of aerial. When we place service, we don't place service all, all the way to the house. We, we set the terminal. And for customer order service, we come out, run a drop wire to the house, service drop, which is fiber. Um, and remove the copper drops in the view. So, and then it goes in to an optical network terminal inside the house. And then cat fiber coax to maintain a very fast connection. The modem is a fantastic modem. It has, you know, the ability to plug in ethernet ports in the back and or a very, very fast wireless. Uh, connection, uh, and it's included in the price of drum. It's not at all. So it's, it's, it comes with the service. Uh, again, it's voice and data only, not video. And, uh, the customer has an option. If they so inclined to purchase battery backup unit, they can put it in their house. It keeps the O and T, the optical electronic terminal inside the house powered. Should they want their phone to be able to talk on the phone, should it lose power? Okay, so they have an option to maintain at least the ability to call out if they have a phone that's just not connected to power. Okay, let's move forward. All right, so we want to make sure people know we're coming. So generally we use these signs at the entrance of subdivisions, but we may place a couple around the loop of the lake. So people know who is here, who's working, uh, when they are here working. That URL at the bottom of this, uh, uh, sign takes a customer to a site which, uh, walks them through what they can expect from a construction crew. Be it an aerial install or, uh, cable or bear. So they can see exactly, you know, what they can expect with that crew coming through. Let's move forward. More importantly. Uh, about forty-eight hours before we do any work, we place, we place door hangers and these door hangers. Um, again, alert customers, it has that same URL and a QR code on it so they can go to the site for a, a view of, of what to expect on, on the construction. But we'll also have a number for an internal frontier complaints team. Uh, which we monitor these complaints very quickly. We, we respond to the customer within eight hours. Uh, and on bus, business day and, uh, and then we own that complaint till the end. So the customer says they're satisfied, we'll let it go. Uh, guys, you know, his crews work very closely. He's, he's got an inspector that will be up here. Uh, managing crews as well, uh, and they look at these reports all the time. We have a crew that's generating several reports. I mean, they're full of insight very quickly, talk about the, the complaint, get the complaints closed and, and if it keeps repeating, it will. So, uh, we use it again and we can feed that information if they have weekly or every other week meetings with, uh, your, your, uh, public service. Public works teams, uh, and share those, you know, these how many complaints we have. If you receive complaints correctly, which you will, because some people, it doesn't matter what you put on the door. Uh, they're gonna throw it away, they're gonna solicitations them. If you guys could direct them to this complaints team, that way we have one site log every point. And you can be able to, uh, you know, be in a course that we can provide. That helps us manage the periods. Okay, let's move forward. Uh, this is the site, this is a picture of that hub that I talked about, that will have maybe three of. Uh, we try to locate these in locations that aren't going to be, uh, you know, very unsightly to the customers in front of somebody's picture window. But it has to be, you know, not at an intersection where an accident could take one out or, you know, so my slide through intersection. Uh, our technicians have to access that hub anytime they make a, an install. So, uh, you know, you'll see on the plans where we propose to put them. If you want to move them fifty feet one way or another, you know, we'll work with you. Okay? Uh, uh, there's, this is a picture of the biggest tub. Uh, one serves three hundred and thirty. I don't think we'll have to put ones in that are that big. So let's move forward. Uh, we don't have a whole lot of buried, but when we do bury, we do the direction for boring. You guys are probably very familiar with direction for boring. Uh, it's pretty good these days as far as missing other utilities and knowing your depth and location. Um, Todd will share with you guys, uh, uh, when the pre-construction meeting, very comprehensive construction standards that we have for vendors that are doing the work. Uh, and, you know, everything from how to protect a hole if they're going to leave it. Uh, to, uh, uh, restoration of the yard if they tear something up. Uh, so it, it covers everything, everything you can think of from a construction perspective, it's in there. And we hold them accountable and to those specs. And on the right counter, you see it, it's just very splice point, a tub. Uh, but we can move forward because most of what we're doing will be on the next slide. And this is a depiction of the aerial overlash. So, uh, again, we already have attachments on the poles, we already have copper cables that are in place. Uh, we simply spin a fiber cable right to that copper cable. So, um, we were just at a meeting earlier today and our person in town said. That's fantastic. We're not putting new attach poles, right? It's going to be quick and easy. We don't even care. You don't even let us, I don't regard advice, what you're doing there. Uh, we already have our separations, our clearances, everything. And while they're doing this, they will address any pole issues that they find because we don't want to put our ethernet hookup on bad poles. Uh, or, or, uh, you know, in, in the middle of a congested tree area, we'll use tree trimming and this kind of thing. So. And then on the right is, when we do bury, that's a depiction of a terminal that, uh, we use for the burying. It's about fourteen inch install. We use them above ground a little bit like that because of the snow. I mean, the technicians have to be able to go out and find the thing, but it's, it's snow. Okay, let's move forward. We're about, about finished here. This is the optical network terminal, a little box inside of the house. Again, we can terminate a fiber out here, go in coax or ethernet. So we maintain that very fast connection. Um, and we activate then twenty feet of power. So it would be near where the power meter is so we can access the multi-point neutral. And utilize that as well. Let's move forward. By the side, you really want to see is the last one? This is where we're building. And I don't know if you can shrink this or. I don't know if they can see on, you know, online or, oh. But that's, the orange represents aerial, brown represents bear. Okay, so you can see the vast majority of the bill is, uh, proposed to be aerial. Uh, there's a few, a few buried locations as well, so. Whatever. So there's no, uh, no conduit systems as far as that goes from the central office, but. Cruel merger proposed to host these, they don't care. Um, I don't, that's no, yeah, I don't think so, but you guys will have. Obviously both ranch premises. Yeah, it'll be, you don't worry, you're not, you don't, they'll be indicated on Prince Joe. Generally, it's, it's where, you know, we can branch off and serve multiple areas, so, um. Yeah, we probably should have these. Yeah.
Yeah, I think it would be important for you guys to work with Guy Rogers closely and where they are. Uh, is that correct, Guy? Guy would be your primary point of contact on this and she would definitely be looked in.
Okay.
If he hasn't been already.
Uh, somebody reach out to you if you've got any information as far as plans or anything. Okay, all right. Um, unless it was through. Here's several just. I've been working with them, so, and why are you, you're, you're recent, right? Yeah. Have you kind of started getting lead to the underground on Penner Drive though? You know? I'm getting to that, not at all.
That's not even starting to tell me I'm doing that, right? That was the need, um, like.
Yeah, you know what? I mean, we're not, and many of these, uh, locations we're going, we're not the first company that's coming. Um, and it makes it a little bit more difficult for some of the companies, for us. You know, didn't do a real good job, uh, for roads, for things. Uh, but, uh, you know, we've, again, from a quality perspective. Uh, we're pretty happy with, uh, with what we see from a place perspective with, yeah, we manage.
Well, Michael, thank you for the presentation and Todd for being here. I'd like to open it up, Guy, first of all, um. Let's make sure that they have their, you have Guy's contact information because Guy will be your primary point. Uh, we just, we don't need to have any other issues with any of the other services that we're planning. So I would ask you work, to work closely with him. And I would ask council and the audience, do you have any questions for Michael or Todd? So just raise your hand and.
Okay, get some things started. On the map, there's some gaps. What do those represent? Why are there gaps in the? That's. Location of our service.
So, so some of those, uh, locations, it, it doesn't go down every road. I mean, some locations, you know, it'll be in between and it serves both roads, uh, depending on where the use of this, but if you can point out a gap here.
Right, it's probably.
Like a can's concerned. This seems out of the.
I see. That was an eye test. Uh, no, so, uh, we'll take that back. I mean, they're really, it doesn't look like there should be any reason why. And do you know if the plant is aerial or buried there right now? Your service?
It's aerial.
It's aerial.
Yeah.
Yeah, so is. It, it. Probably just, uh, I don't know, didn't get copied or did get colored in, so.
So that would be something if the map could be updated and include the three.
Uh, applications, yeah.
Uh, because I think that's a map we would want to have here in the office at a minimum to feel any.
So what we need to do is I could give you, we'll have a copy of, we call them the feeder routes. That's where feeds the hubs from the office. It'll show you on that overlay, the exact route of that feeder and where the hubs are. Awesome.
Right.
So.
And Michael, is this presentation, can we post it on our website to, for anybody that have, any of the residents that have questions?
Uh, yeah, the map, um, we generally don't share that because, uh, for competitive reasons.
Uh.
Uh, so if you could, yeah, sure.
Well, maybe if you could send a file that we, you know, share and send it to the same email address that you sent this stuff to would be helpful.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Are you done?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. First of all, the map is not a complete map because half of Brown Lake is missing. And so that's a big omission unless I, unless it's not the complete, that's why. Yes, okay, there you go, there you go, thank you, Sarah, okay. So my question about the hubs is, are they placed on private residential's property, private residence? Or is it in a public location?
Oh, right, right. Uh, you know, obviously right away.
Public right away, that's, okay.
That's the same thing as. Personally, on private property.
Right away means every resident has like a few or so of their property. So I think that's a huge. Part of this that really needs to be disclosed because honestly, I don't want one of those ugly boxes on my property.
Yeah.
And I think it's fair to say that, so.
It is.
You know, I don't think anyone does.
I heard.
So I think you're going to have some problems. So to not have that disclosed here is a big, big omission on that map.
Well, and, um, just in the spirit of transparency, um, this is the first presentation on this, um, the engineers have gone around. So that's the whole point of today's. That's the whole point of today's meeting, is to take feedback and so they can understand that, but that's kind of why I came. And so to have a great map and then not have really the key part missing.
Yeah.
A glaring omission.
You'll see, when you, when you get the plans, uh when you get the plans, he will get a uh. Not only the plans, it'll have a picture of the hub location, so we, you know, we go out and say it's where the hub. Will be set and here's behind, so you can see. You know, and maybe just season one way or another, whether, you know, if it's really exciting for him, he's moved a little bit once, so.
Yeah, we don't want to set it in front of your picture one way or obstruct your, you know, claim or whatever, so if it goes on your property. Then that's what those people can achieve. If you got questions, or more hacks, you make a phone call, we'll send a courier, I'll meet with you. We can make a trustment sometime, so.
Uh do you have a single thread coming from the CO or do you have any redundancy built in? And if you do, to what point, um you know, a lot of us have generators because the electricity got cut off. Uh you know, the electrical get cut off, now with the generators, we keep that going. This too, a lot of people, would be a lifeline for them, to be able to communicate to get out, so I was kind of wondering. If if there is a a failure, what is the typical response time, what does it look like? And if there's any redundancy built in, up to clearly, um when and where might that be for, for disaster recovery purposes?
You can have that response sound, but we.
Yeah, so the CO is what the generator. Um now I'm talking about in the CO here, from CO to here, there's no, no redundancy. No, so it it is straight cable from the office to here, feeds each hub. Um there's, you know, if there's a cut or something. Obviously, if it's a main line cut, it's got multiple hubs outside priority for workers, we're going out there relatively quick. As we can, natural disasters that may hit them. Um you know, retransparency, but the the bigger the outage, the higher it is up on priority.
Guys, that's one of the things that we do from a planning standpoint, is look at disaster recovery and what some of our options are. Uh and I didn't know if you ran maybe dual fire under Fremont, then it's a single line.
You know, another transport that goes off to the office, yes.
Okay.
We're actually ready for that turn.
And our CO is located where?
I believe Brady signed it. Okay. The welding shop in town. Sorry, and you're getting this hub is right across the street from the welding shop.
The CO, do you know exactly where it is?
I don't know exactly where it was, it Fremont.
Yeah, that's where their frontier block building there.
Yeah.
Well, that that's kind of, that's some of the information that we would really like you to get to Guy, and like Devon stated, and it's important for us to know. Where those are going.
Yeah.
That helps, I mean, because Devon's right, I think everybody in this room and everybody not in this room is gonna say, not my. Um so it's gonna be important for you guys to provide that information to Guy, and then Guy knows how to work with the residents and go from there.
I think so, obviously, as the permitting authority, you guys will have copies of all the plans. And know exactly where we're gonna go, where we're putting it, what, where we're putting, what.
Way there would be preferred ties.
Yeah. Uh permit, so once we get permitted, uh we're ready to go.
Now, permitting in many of the municipalities that we typically go to, there's no permitting required for aerial. Uh do you know there's permitting required for an operator? Well, I I do have like two questions for you. One, if one of these lines come down. Am I gonna be able to talk to an actual person?
Yeah.
And explain to them where it's at, because with media com, it's a nightmare, and I go sniff and throw it out there. Yes. After this meeting, you will receive um a contact list that has everything you need as far as, you know. What kind of emergency, what kind of issue you have, um to uh to reach out and you'll get a quick response, so. Um that's one of the things that we haven't, you know, we know, we're in an area community. This is something that we haven't updated in a lot of years. Um and it's something that that we want to make sure that you have in your hands, that you know, who to go to to get anything.
So is that a higher escalation for the town personnel versus just this, the average user? Do you have an escalation point from a, from a town prefect?
Yeah, yeah, we know habits, so if you have a local person in town, you know, handles that that particular issue.
Well, I'm, I guess I'm related to an outage, would he have a different number because he's the superintendent of the streets versus me as a user?
Well, it's more, it's more like cables down, poles broken, you know, laying and and in the street, um.
So if you're service, you're still not answering my question?
Yeah.
The question is, is there a priority number for the town personnel versus the average user that may call in?
Well, there is for, again, those issues I'm talking about, not for if your service is out.
Agreed, that's, that's.
Services out, they have the same number as you.
Right. But. Yeah, I'm talking about service, I'm talking about.
If I have an emergency, is there a different number that I can call to get a faster response?
This one?
Yeah. That's the answer I can make.
Yes, yes, yes.
Me, I now have a local manager that works at Fort Wayne, that covers. This area, okay, um so between him or I, and then the local inspector will have on the front of the whole project. Uh you'll have plenty of phone numbers to call.
And my other question is, on your map, it shows. On East Square Lady Drive, Dan's gonna know exactly where I'm going with this. We did uh for our twenty twenty-six road project, it includes Outer Drive. And the section from above Clear Lake Pub. On Outer Drive, all the way around Outer Drive up to the Lutheran Church, do you know if that aerial on the east side of the road is your guys'? Because if it is, you got a lot of work to do. It's about this high on the ground and there's trees across it and grow through. Well, you know, I mean, uh like I mentioned before, we will take care of it, if it is ours. Uh maybe we go by there, uh we, uh yeah, we need to, I began, yeah. Because I've tried for years to get someone to take care of it and no one will. We'll try to see if it's ours, let you know that, but. Maybe it's not hard to see because you can look out the window with your collar and it's eye level.
Yes.
Anything, counsel, any other questions? So what I'd like to ask, um Michael, I know you have the email for our willing clerk. If you just emailed her with all of your information and she will get it. To Guy and Nathan, who will you be your primary points of contact for follow-up on this, please, thank you. Thank you both for being here.
I don't think this is for.
And then, um yeah, go ahead, Guy, that's fine, I will now entertain a motion to close public comment.
Sprint, I'll make a motion to close public comment.
Could I have a second?
This is burner, I'll sign that.
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, appearing none, just areas. We will now move to the second item under these business, super utility. Preventative maintenance plan, and I'm gonna turn it over to Guy.
Okay, so uh in the council materials, uh. In session part, actually, that was back that last, last month, I communicated that I was working with the RI, I have this this year. On uh moving to our essentially sewer utility from a. Uh failure repair um process to the preventative maintenance uh process. Part of doing that, uh we've been undergoing uh already, which is to catalog all of the sewer grangers. Uh those are found. Uh the pieces yet in the system that are important to catalog and understand are the air relief valves, there's thirty-nine of those. Uh one has already failed and is uh unrepaired as of. Uh today, so we know that we're gonna start seeing more problems, so part of uh. Part of what Jessica has put together uh from the RI is. An itemized list that you will see in attachment A of the uh. Of the proposal, oh proposal. Um to catalog those, I think that was the single largest uh line I had spent. Best reusable, whether we actually see some old B and plan to fruition. Because we gotta know what we got. Uh and then there's other uh tasks uh in that plan. Uh that take us through the development of the uh preventative maintenance plan. Uh right now, uh just uh I decided this to burn, so I'll provide the information, everybody, we. Have in our budget about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh annually for. What I would consider repairs uh to the sewer system. And um part of this uh uh activity will be to. Uh define an ROI, return on investment, um. The thing that uh we all need to be aware of is that uh the return on investment uh will be. Assuming a steady state, to get to a steady state, given that we have, when we have a hundred. Sixty plus of grangers that are already beyond their ten-year service life, and we have. Um these air relief valves, one of which has failed. We're gonna go through a number of years just to get those replaced and in a uh steady state of preventative maintenance. But after that point, uh I could see, you know, twenty-five to thirty percent savings uh coming out of this approach. We're gonna put numbers to that, that's part of the plan, um and so I don't have a handout. You know.
I'm.
Notice. Attention, man.
Hey. It's a tough.
Yeah. There you go. Yes. So I'll open it up, Danny, questions by counsel, uh this is a quick comment, Dan, because you'll be able to kind of. You took a lead on this when we did the fee schedule, and we had the outside company come in to look at this, I think it's important for everybody to understand. That for the life of the components in our sewer system, we're taking into account with the fees that we all pay. And that's why we see increases that we see every year is because as they looked at it. They understood the Dan's point, and he's got grammers that are outside of that ten-year window. You've got sessions where they know an air relief is gonna go out, whether it's went out or not. They're using their analysis to determine that the town is gonna have to have the money to recover and recoup and fitness. To keep the sewer system running for all of us, so as we talk about the preventative maintenance. It was also taken into consideration during the length of the. Or the length of the components were taken into consideration when our fee schedules were developed for the sewer. For both. Uh any other thoughts? Okay. Alright. So my uh uh my desire is to uh continue to develop this uh the maintenance plan. I am not uh going to ask for the full uh itemized list. And I, I think that the the right spot to uh put a hold is at the. Project and projected ROI draft for review. This will be uh a good point in time that we can see what we've got. Um what uh preventative maintenance costs are looking like based on some uh early estimates. And then um a look at what our actual expenses are. And I mentioned that ended amounts, but I can get to the actuals uh through our appropriations here over here. Uh and then we'll, we'll be able to take a look at the plan. See the ROI, see if it's favorable to us, and then uh finish it off. So with that said, um if there are other questions, I would like to make a motion. That uh we approve the expenses uh uh for the items of. Uh totaling twenty-five thousand seven hundred. Uh which are the items starting with asset inventory and ending with projected ROI draft for.
We have a motion, could I have a second?
This is burner, I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion here. Thank you for your work, Dan and Jessica. Well, now, who to item, the uh the third item, application to install private utility under the redway. And I believe Dan is going to introduce this, I'm sorry, please.
Yep, and so um. The first, uh first thing I want to do is uh is kind of a context around this, so we currently have road fat permits. It's uh in place, that addresses. Uh most of the surface uh kinds of activities, the excavating uh of the road, et cetera. What we really don't have uh is a permit for boring. Uh we just heard tonight, the intention is for uh particularly. Uh under our D roads, we want to protect the investment that we've made in those roads. And so this permit outlines all of the requirements. That we would expect be followed and agreed to prior boring uh taking place. And then it also outlines uh the expectation that Guy uh will actually be given an opportunity. To map that underground utility into RTIS, so that we know it's there for all time to come. Uh there are uh, obviously, there's costs to doing that work uh for the town, so. Uh I've posted a hundred and fifty dollars as part of the application. Uh as a fee, and for that reason, uh because there's a cost, uh tonight, we can't vote on it. We can only introduce it and talk about it. Uh we'll post it online, follow the comments, and that will. Go to approving at a later date, but uh so tonight, I'd like to get it, uh any comments, questions, or just. Application for permit.
I don't, I don't have any, and I, I think it's great that, you know, they have to work with guys, so guys are aware. Because we have so much activity and vulnerability, so I think that's a good. Measure to improve. And.
And I, I, I will uh always comment, it's like, I'm beginning to end this problem. As opposed to having really issues with boring, et cetera. Uh one question I have, and I, I don't have the feel for it, but is a hundred and fifty enough to cover the. Probably the local trips that guys can have to make, first before the permits issued, and then they follow up to. Verify that the work they said they're gonna do is done, so uh that it'll cover several trips. Like I said, I don't have a feel for it, I just like. Throw it out. I think you're, I would, I would, you want some charge, I think that might be a little light, it might be. Um. It depends on how big the project is, so to, if I, if they're doing a thousand foot bore and I have to go three different days. You know.
This is under the roadway, and this isn't along roadway. Where we're uh traversing underneath, so uh twenty feet.
Okay, it should be somewhere in that neighborhood. So just from my own uh education, so just under the roadway, so if it's along the roadway. Like we're hearing about tonight, is that a separate process or it's already covered under a different type of comment? No, if it's along, if it's not going under the roadway, there is. There's no permit required for that.
Well, we're gonna be careful about that, because uh the town doesn't necessarily control all the property adjacent. So. I think we've had, we've heard from residents that may be concerned that you have utilities or other things going to. Personal property, but uh from a town perspective, I agree, you know, we don't have a permit. If we don't have rights, we don't have control of the land, I mean.
Good question, anybody else? Thank you, so Nathan will put this on the agenda, we'll need to help us post it, since there's gonna be attached to it. And then we'll put this on the agenda for the September. And then we'll move to item number D, the soil boring, and anything Dan's going to cover that as well.
Yeah, so the road committee met this last month and we always review risks associated with projects that are planned in the planning stage. One of the, one of our lessons learned is that when we run into surprises during construction, those costs to remedy those surprises are at one hundred percent on the town. And if we can identify risks that might drive costs or construction, it's better to do that upfront when we're doing estimate where we do our application. And in this year's, actually, the Turner project being along South Clear Lake Drive, we know that that area is low elevation. We've got marshy areas, long distance. We have a lot of saturated soils. And so to get ahead of that and try and understand if we're at risk in location upon that plane, we would like to take additional foreign samples. We have just a couple from the original batch that we did a number of years ago. They knows. But these are more targeted in the areas that we know could, could cause us an issue during construction. They're also a little, little different in that we're going to go much deeper in five feet. And we're, we've identified six locations along the project and got a quote that in council's package. I think it was fifty seven hundred dollars. So I will open it up to any questions.
Did these additional boards dampen, cover the entire protected route or the, or the additional ones coming? Or is this kind of?
This is the, the total.
I don't see questions.
I have none.
Okay, well, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the additional forum locations at the cost of fifty seven hundred dollars.
You have a motion, could I have a second, please?
This is Brent, I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none, motion here is.
So you got, who would like to coordinate that?
Thank you.
Contact. Meanwhile.
We have no unfinished business, which surprised me, but we don't. So we'll move forward with the council report, so Nathan, you're up.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I just got back last week doing my annual contacts in Freshwick, Indiana. It was the Indiana Per Traders Association meeting, it was a very interesting meeting. In that I learned a lot of information. A lot of the topic, a lot of the time was spent on H V mountain and impacts that H V ones that have on communities in Indiana. My big takeaway from that conference is that we are all very lucky to live where we live, to have the resources that we have, to be working with the people that we work. I, I was very anxious to get back to Clear Lake after being both three days because you realize how much you missed Clear Lake when you're caught. And there was also a lot of takeaways as far as a few new things that are going to be rolling now. We did talk a lot about the recording process with council meetings. I don't know why that was such a big problem with a lot of towns, but we were already way ahead of her. This room is something that not a lot of towns have. And we are way ahead of the curve when it came, when it came to that. So a lot of the communities were looking at us like we're space agents heading everybody. As far as financially, we are in a much tighter position comparatively speaking. A lot of communities, we are able to apply for C C N T funds, which a lot of other entities, they may have to get alone, try to, you know, go for those funds where they might empty, empty their coffers out. We are in a good position with respect to that. So it was a very insightful conference and I really appreciate finding those. And I look forward to going again next year and getting an email out with a lot of the takeaways that I got from the council, some of the outcomes finally this week. As far as financial reports, there was a appropriation in M V H that me and Guy looked at, that there was a little bit of overrun. So we took care of that this month, we've made an adjustment to that. I think it was the building made this part of the M V H side, we took care of that. Um, it's fine. For appropriation, revenue reports are all, and if you have any questions, I can take those down.
Anybody have questions for Nathan?
Just one. Do you have any concerns on percentages left, normal we're at this year versus, I noticed a couple of them were nipping down.
We're going to have to do an additional appropriation for attorney's fees. And we're also going to have to do an additional appropriation for the Nisco payments that we're going to have to make. So we will do an additional appropriation program next month. And we'll take a look, me and George and Dan, we can take a look at all the different accounts. Bert, I did get back to on your question, did you have any follow ups with that?
No, I mean, I understood your response. I guess what I can point or follow was where would I reference the rainy day fund transfer?
Yes.
Where would I see that in, in this list, or maybe I went a bit the wrong way.
You go to the fund or fund report, okay.
It'll say transferred and you'll see ninety. Yeah, I saw the transfer. I just didn't see it in the appropriations part that's shown on my.
Yeah, it kind of skews the numbers, we did that big transfer in Birch.
Yeah.
It takes a big chunk of our percentage of money available. So, yeah, it kind of skews the numbers. So I don't know if they're going to see that there in a very specific place, it's going to say, hey, this is why it's down.
Yeah, I just thought I would see a line item and somewhere in this stack of accounts, but we can take that offline. That was the piece that I, I just couldn't. I'm going to have two dots, that's all.
Yeah. I, I can show you that after.
Okay.
Any other questions for Nathan?
Oh, one more thing, I do have all budget numbers in, I have my budget meeting with my DLGF rep on Friday. All the budget numbers are in, revenues are in. So I spent about four hours today making sure all the numbers are correct and everything like that. So that meeting is on Friday and I'm ready to go for that.
Well, thank you and George and Dan for all the good work.
And you will be presenting the overview then in September, but you did last September.
Yep.
Okay. So September will be a longer meeting, everybody get ready. And now we'll turn it over to Chris, your report.
For the month of July, we worked a total of two hundred and forty four point seven five hours on road. Eight hundred and fifty four miles, we had fifty six hours on the road patrol. We have one golf, one vehicle inspection. There was fifteen traffic violations, thirteen boat violations, three golf cart violations. As far as the police department, we had one alarm and suspicious complaint. Sheriff's office in town handled one domestic battery, one property damage trap. And then the township, there was one suspicious, one dog problem, one welfare check, one disorderly, one custodial interference, one domestic, one harassing T X. So the other thing I just wanted to ask left, did you ever figure out about Maple Street? Whether, you know.
Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah.
Is it, is it a town street or not a town street?
It is.
It is not, it is not.
It's been made up.
So there's, that's not actually where we're at. We're still somewhere in between because the, because the action defined certain parameters must be completed and impartially where they complete. The lawyers are saying that it's unexecuted, it remained unexecuted. So for now, no enforcement on, you know, if there is anything else. Well, I would assume it's still the town, right? Because the, the, I'm trying to think of what you found in our district.
Well, there's, I, I have a little confused because what I have here is that it from, I'm not an attorney, but it sure looks like it was executed for me. We have an ordinance signed, sealed, delivered by the town council.
But it was contingent on certain actions taking place of which only half of the.
Yeah, so George can you and Dan can respond.
Yeah. Better than debating it here.
Yeah.
Yes, and you have the, the file.
I had not.
Oh, no, but you do have a copy of it, yeah. It's a little, it's a little confusing, but once you figure out what lay of it.
So again, maybe you guys can even talk after the meeting and somebody follow up with.
Yes, yes, I'll get it in front of you, okay, so. Okay. No, I, I had my head that was done, so I'm.
That, so did I, so, sorry.
I'll have to add, I never heard back, so.
Yeah. Another thing is looking at some town ordinances, no complaints on or anything like that, but I did come across that. I think all you guys got the email on it. Currently, side by sides or YouTube's are currently town ordinance are not allowed on the roads. The way we, so my recommendation is we need to update that town ordinance to make them permissible on the roadways. They're going to go through ever since I've been up here. But we need to get the town ordinance applied to that, so that way it actually is.
Unless it's not, okay. Clear Lake's not the only town, this is something that people aren't knowing more about. So I want to, like, if you did work with the attorneys, look at that added. I think, and if we can, one more thing for the September meeting.
I did have a couple examples of town ordinance, then fifth for us. And then actually everywhere, everywhere in the county, they're legal, like the center for the city in April. But all other towns have, there are a lot of places, will not be that updated.
Yeah.
If you're free sheet, you're identifying and again, kind of piggybacking off of the way Dan's trying to take a proactive approach to the sewer, appreciate you taking a proactive, proactive approach to the town.
Yeah, kudos to you and your team.
I'll handle everyone. Okay. That's all I had on this, everybody. So I'll be giving introduction. So we have had numerous calls recently over ports in order on the streets and if there are things that can be done about it due to the numbers of calls that I received, I thought it best to reach out to Chris and Molly. And unbeknownst to me, Molly had received numerous calls and had already started doing a little bit digging and research. And so I'll let her explain what she was informed by our top term.
Yeah. Basically, in this, there is really nothing that we can do, nobody in the state of Indiana has really been able to do anything. This is directly from our attorney, there is no way to enforce the ordinance unless someone observes it, reports it, and the officer issues a citation before they leave the press. So to have all those things happen, first of all, would be the only way we could do anything. Then the second part of that is then what do we do if they don't pay? Are we going to take them to court? And I think we all understand where we will end up, we will be spending money. And it would be a vicious circle. So this is the guidance and this includes, our attorney has checked with what they're doing in the range. So the best guidance that we received is to talk to the Amish bishop, which I know, we have one of our employees, Guy, has done that repeatedly. The other thing is we as residents, when, if contractors are using them on your property, you can ask that they not be used or that they clean up. I know we had a resident on South Shore this fall and they said to the contractor, if you're going to use the Amish, I expect them to clean up. Or I don't want them on my job site. When they come selling baked goods, that's up to you to decide. I know the public beach, there's a lot on East Shore. There's nothing we can do.
So to, yeah, I'm going to expand on this. I was asking questions of what buggies were being seen because different communities had different buggies. I observed on the Saturday evening which the most buggies that were out here, and they're coming from the Camden area, not California corners area. So I have been talking to those guys and most of them are carrying shovels and a bucket to clean up when they go to the ice cream shop or the beach. They haven't been cleaning up at the beach. But they're going to try to do better about not cleaning road apples.
Thank you, Bob. So that's, that's the update on the.
That's really good, thank you. Yeah, so I had a pretty good report with most of them, so.
It's great, so thank you. Then the other thing I have for Chris, and I could be off online once. We learned a lot about houseboat. I don't know if that was July or August, I could go back and look at my phone as the texts and recalls. But just for the sake of the audience, if you could share just a few highlights that we all learned, because there was nothing illegal about what happened.
So houseboats in Indiana, the boat has to follow all the regular voting regulations that are on any other boat. Houseboats are allowed on the lakes, they are allowed to spend as many days or weeks as they, the person would like out on the water. There's no timeframe that they can only stay out for. If it is a houseboat and they have a restroom on it, it has to have a holding tank and then they have to have a way to pump out that holding tank, which most of them do after they leave the lake, the part of that. So everything that this houseboat on Clear Lake was doing perfectly legal. Went out there, talked to the owner of the boat, the D N R actually went out there and did inspection on the boat and everything was legal with that house. Out there on the water. Absolutely, the houseboat. Adrian off boat, so I went a little more angry and they were on it.
Thank you, Chris. Anything else for Chris? It's not a busy month. I'll now turn it over to Brent to go over the fire report.
Here it is. We had a total of eleven incidents within the town of Clear Lake. We had included two mutual aids and a region total of eleven. Down in Clear Lake's mutual aids in July decreased with two in twenty twenty five versus three in twenty four. Down at Clear Lake's various calls in July decreased with eleven in twenty five versus twelve in twenty four. The, clearly the township decreased various calls in July with zero in twenty twenty five compared to five in twenty twenty four. The regional totals were lower with eleven in twenty five versus seventeen in twenty four. And do want to highlight that the guy who came was called out twice last month again. Both of those calls were into neighboring Michigan communities. As you can see, or if you remember from last, last month, we did see increase from month to month. However, if you compare July of twenty four, July of twenty five, when our not residents, but volume of people here increased. So if you compare that to twenty four to twenty five, good sign, showing stats.
Any questions for Brent? Thank you, Brent. We now have the, the Sony report was in everybody's packet and I don't know if we have opened it up to a public. For Jim, two percent.
Yeah, so I'd like to make a motion to open up for a part of the timeline.
I have a motion, I have a second, please.
To start off, I have that.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none, motion here is Jim, if you want to for some Sony, and thank you for being here.
Thank you. For the month of July, it was a little bit light. We had three new I O Ps for the month. And some of the, one, one was rather minor, actually two were rather minor, a third one was a full demo and reconstruction of a home. The, the second minor one did take a little bit of extra time in the investigation process because it was on a street that had, is actually not a public street, is considered a driveway. Is considered a driveway. It's a private drive which has some uh, circumstances. Uh, we were no uh, zoning. No appeals for zoning. From the V C A perspective, some meetings canceled. And then, um, we did have, um. Uh. We did hear, oh, that that was in August, but uh, we also had a number of. Requests or inquiries to do administrative subdivisions. So as I'm starting to work this. Uh, typically, we haven't had the administrative subdivision until it's done and a case number is born. But I I started to make a bit of a change as the acting. Z A to say when someone comes in and starts the inquiry process. There is a lot of work to be done. And unfortunately, I don't think we're capturing the amount of work that it takes. To and and the timeframe it takes to potentially do an administrative subdivision. Uh, and it's also a lot of counseling with the advocates. So there's a lot of time spent with the person explaining what they need to do, how they need to do it. Uh, so that does take a little bit of time. Uh, so while the month of July was red light. Uh. Boy. Beginning of August, things really jumped. We had seven. Uh, project requests and now all the projects rather than I O Ps. Because they really are a project for a problem. A property may have an I O P, it may have a demo, it may have a right of way, it may need boring. It may need administrative subdivision. Currently, that's disjointed. Uh, so we track each of those separately. And I think what we need to do is compile those, bring that together so we understand. But we had seven protest requests. Uh, one of them was a complete rejection, uh, because it stated. Directly in the U D O that this is not allowed. But I think, you know, again, getting back and making sure we track all the things we're doing is going to be important. Uh, so in August, we had the seven. Well, since August first, uh, two violations. Uh, we had continued progress with the uh, plenty of record. About the minor subdivision. We've made a lot of headway through that. Uh. Lot of work was done and the only difference now is we're just going to request from our runoff and drainage. That should be completed then, uh, as soon as their attorneys and architects that. We did have a full completed administrative subdivision. We had three additional administrative subdivision inquiries. We had. Someone come in requesting a lot of work to be done. Uh, had we looked at resulted in a, uh. Uh. Letter of non objection. So even though there are things that doesn't require an I O P. We did need to do some work and provide a letter of non objection. Again, it's another metric that is not there that we need to follow up on. And then we did send out ten letters, uh. On I O P extensions for ninety days because many of our I O Ps were expiring. They're only good for a year. Uh, and the plan commission will begin to work through that as well to better understand the transition process. Uh, how that works. We did have three right away requests that we did for boring. Uh, I worked closely with Guy on that to to get that uh. pulled together, but there's a considerable amount of things happening. And I think unfortunately, uh, while we track all the I O Ps and we track the major things. There are a lot of things that are being done. By the the being done by the zoning administrator that we didn't have metrics on. So we really didn't have a really accurate picture of what was happening, but that would be changing and. Plan is to report that power on the next month. So include additional statuses of I O P not required. That's separate, uh, if we need, uh. Uh. Letter of non objection. And looking at all the different types of requests or to deny it, but. Kind of looking at taking the opportunity to revamp. What we have, provide better metrics and have a better understanding. So there's a uh, scope of. The capacity again, the volume of information coming through the the C A laws.
Thank you, Jim. I appreciate it. And thanks to the executive team, the planning mission executive team. Dan, I know you sit on that and built the end and we stopped here um, today. Any questions for Jim?
This one, I found this is. I have fabulous job.
Any other questions for Jim? I will now entertain a motion to close the public comment. C A report.
For a genuine, we close the uh, public comments period.
And. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Guy, we'll turn it over to you for the superintendent's report.
I worked a total of a hundred and ninety three hours last month. Uh, sewer department, I did sixty locates. I had eight alarm calls, replaced five grinders, I did not repair any, and I set up five. Um. Our new grinders did come in, so that changed our numbers. We have twenty two grinders on hand, eighteen still locked. I don't have any waiting on repair right now. Uh, our trailer flow was eighty seven, five eighty five. Uh, sewer truck mileage on the. Two thousand and eight truck had a hundred and forty seven. The twenty twenty five had three hundred and thirty seven, total of four eighty four. And the dump truck, we put a hundred and sixty three miles on. And I will expand on the crane issue that Nate mentioned mentioned earlier. Uh, we received the truck. And, uh. We're, I was messing with the crane. I thought the battery was just dead in the hand control. For some reason, there wasn't a charger with it. We received the charger. The hand control wouldn't charge. For the remote. They sent us a new battery. That needs to fix the problem, so they ended up ordering a new control module. And wiring harness everything for it, so I need to run down the collider in the next couple of weeks and have all that put in. It'll be, they said it taking about an hour to two hours. And install and then I'll lie back.
On the locates, are you using a new locator now?
Uh, these were, these were all on last class, so that was on the old location here. I had started using the new one. So. For some reason, we went from getting a pile of locates every day to having none hardly. And. But I I did give some more today, but we did, I did not give them today because of the rain. Our water base paint just runs right back off of each radio, so.
Thank you. Any other questions for God?
Okay, there's there's one other question, Guy. Just need to share with you these uh, the feedback I got from Sunset Bay. From the sign, everybody on Sunset, most everyone on Sunset Bay appreciates the sign. Personally, I hope that you put a load of the concrete in the base of it and weld it with the titanium.
I use.
Add an anti.
I knew anti tamper. Set screws to put it on. I did every time in my hour. I cannot well that because it's hot.
Okay.
But that is our last one, so. From here on out, I don't know if we supply them or if their association does. But for the streets, I I believe we do and.
Everybody's aware that. They're installed and planned. I think everybody is suspect of where they may be. It's like the whole manager watch. Of course.
Anything else for God?
Yeah, we're probably just getting the old sewer properties.
Um, that was, that is in our list. Jen and I are going to make an ad. Um, and we got it. You still have the stuff from the attorney on how we have pulled off selling that?
Yeah, but I could look at it. I might find a way into it too.
So, okay. So you just gotta give me the go ahead of this.
Okay.
So we can, I got a description written up on it. And. Yes, basically, we put our minimum bid in. And then do a sealed bid on it. I don't know, decide maybe you want to throw an account and get the front council be approved for us to sell.
Motion move forward.
Okay.
What is the minimum?
Uh, we had two different places value truck for us and. One valued at twelve thousand and the other one valued a thousand five hundred, so we were going to start at twelve.
I'm gonna make the motion to move forward, rescinding the uh, old sewer truck or taking them on to the twelve thousand.
I have a motion. Could I have a second?
Sure, Guy, second motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Guy, and Jen, Nathan, if you guys can work to. Make that happen. Thank you. Anything else for God? Okay, hearing none there, we will move on to council member reports. And then it'll be general discussion. Council members, anybody? Insured me.
The number of my please, so. Go ahead, go. Uh, first of all, Rogue Committee. Um. Uh, I want to thank, uh. Uh, and and the B L Z crew, they were able to process all of the survey information. And get it in front of the road committee for a first look of all the drawings and. Uh, potential, uh. Um. Drainage related uh, kind of challenges, uh, Rogue Committee provided feedback. Uh, to uh, B L Z, they're working with that. Uh, but uh, we identified, um. Uh, uh, a need to meet the. Again, the uh, we all know the application is due in October, uh, which is somewhat of a short fuse for us. And here the design, uh, we decided to hold a public walk of the project. Uh, we completed that yesterday. We had uh, ten folks uh, show up. Um. You know, we thought, uh, I thought going into that walk that we were going to be the ones sharing information. But it was, uh, just a fabulous exchange back and forth. Uh, with the residents, uh. Discussing their observations, uh. And, uh, you know, the history of the uh, road segments that we're looking at, so. Uh, I will propose to the road committee that that become a standard, uh, thing for us on all future road projects. Um. So now we've got all of that information from yesterday and Todd's going to roll all of that in. And we're actually going to be in in very, uh, very mature state. Uh, going into the application and estimating process. So feel uh, really good about that, uh, wanted to share that.
On that, will there be any action we need to take at the September meeting? There probably will be, so. If we can make sure, um, Nathan to follow up with, uh, on what we need on the September agenda. Okay, please, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, and I'm making sure that Todd and Jess are over here because indeed Todd has sent all the road information from past projects. To. E R I will burn, you guys have some loads, so there you go, guys. There's your sign. So continuing, uh, we talked about the backup generator. Uh, we had the plans to have the uh, system, uh, architecture. Uh, completed in August. We we've got, we had to extend that timeline for another month, uh. And, uh, right now I will have the draft, uh, come September. And then likely, I don't know if we'll get the public meeting in in September, it might slip to October. We're still on the ride. We've got plenty of time to get this, uh. Uh, completed, uh, we're retiring next year for construction, so no, no risk on that. That's the update on the backup generator. Uh, the G I S system, as Guy indicated, the locator has been, uh, received, the training done. Uh, he is starting to use it, so will be, the expectation is is that the G I G I S will be uploaded. With all the uh, future locates, um, and. Um. I think that's it on that part, just reading minutes. Uh, so your sewer utility preventive maintenance, uh, we talked about that, so nothing additional to to speak to.
Great.
Um, one other thing, and I believe even I need Nathan to hear, the Washler contract, I think is coming. The conclusion this year, so.
Jim asked about.
Yeah, so I think we need to get the bid package, uh, prepared and in front of council and. So that is, I guess, how to. And work on.
Uh, uh, actually to piggyback on that, um, I had a note from Jen about Washler. Um, Washler wanted to have a meeting with the council, know, put this out there in public. But. Washler is going to be taking pictures of the trash cans that they don't pick up. So if a trash can is not on the road where it's supposed to be, they're going to take a picture. So they have proof of why they didn't pick it up, because we have a lot of residents who people call them and say, hey, they didn't pick up my trash. Well, was your trash out by the road? Well, sure it was. And they call Washler, so their washers are going to start taking pictures to have proof. So that we don't have key.
Fortunately, we have to do that. Um, maybe encourage Jen in the neck in the newsletter, because I think she that's going out tomorrow. But I'm going with newsletters to put something in there and also on the front of the website. Like we had similar. Information. That will be helpful. Anything else, Dean?
I did meet with the attorneys this last week, so I'm in, uh. I'm prepared, uh, additional appropriation based on process.
And I just wanted to, you know, everybody, last council meeting, we approved the Clear Lake here at Paris Food Pride. So bags have probably been placed on your door or will be shortly. Um, it's not something that you have to do, but in Fremont, they serve over two hundred families. A month, so that would be something just kind of alerting you that council did approve, um, favor to put those bags on the doors. Um, I also went to the Clear Lake Association meeting along with Chris. Um, and then we're very supportive of everything council's doing, your police presence. And the communication of the directories, there were some questions they. Up from residents that they'd like to font a little bit bigger in the directories and a couple of minor things. I I said I agree with that, so Jen and I already have started a list on that, but, uh, I think everything was positive. With respect, um, to the town. Anybody else on the council? I'll now open it up.
I have, I have, I have some more.
That will work.
Wait, can I wait? Nathan, you have to wait. It's her turn.
Yeah, I just wanted to give an update on the uh, community of operational plan. Uh, which is really the town's. Uh, plan to be able to operate in case we have a disaster or something. Come along. Uh, so what I've done is I've sent out the 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 plan is complete. I sent that out to the council today. What I'd asked is that I could have emailed this. For y'all to take a look at it. It's fairly long document. Uh, and then reply to me with questions, comments, concerns. I'm going to kind of package that all up. Uh, some things will be fairly simple. They'll probably boil down to some things we'll want to discuss. And make sure we're aligned on, but, uh, I will say that this is a fairly structured. Uh, approach based on famous experience. We are very much in. If we are ever in a situation, a tornado or some sort of natural disaster occurs. Um, we're very much within a chain of command. And there's very, uh, you know, the first responders really are the ones that are out and we. Uh, and then we, what this document does is really, um, set a stage for our role within that. So we're very much part of a larger team here, uh, but being aware of. Of what our resources are, that's really what this document does and some of the, um, guidelines I've had of the. So, um, I want to thank first off everyone on, uh, in. Guy and and Nathan and and Jen for their help in putting this together. Uh, Lee Greenemeyer, who's the county director of emergency management. Has looked at this and helped us along and then, um, also also Chris. Uh, so we'll do that and then. Uh, so we'll do that and then we'll see kind of where we're at, like any plan though. You know, when it actually happens, you never actually follow the plan. But the fact that we will at least have something to reference, we'll know where to go, we'll know who to call, um, that's the type of thing that's. Uh, there are some follow-up actions though that when, you know, once we kind of get this. Lock in, some of these things are already rolling, like generator, Jen is working on, um, Chris is gonna get me some information on. Portable radios, so we can kind of have a better way of communicating. Uh, the the last piece of this too is that there is other great online training that some of us, I've taken it. Uh, that some of us should take and some of the town folks, especially there's, we are interacting again with the broader. What do I want to say, community responders when when something like this occurs, right? So we understand how that works, so uh. Lot of words there, but that's kind of some background around that, so I'll just, you know, take your time over the next couple of weeks, send me the information, I'll compile it. Uh, look by our revision and then there probably are a few things that we may want to discuss as a council, we can do that.
Thank you for your questions. And then. Guy had one more thing.
So Todd just texted me from Frontier, that is their mass on our drive, if there will be a group need to. Figure out what they need to do to fix that.
Well, at least you followed up, that's a good start.
Yes.
Uh, I couldn't, I forgot what they're bringing up, right, the conservancy came into today and what they would, this is just a little fun thing. They would like to decorate this Christmas tree out here and have a lighting. Uh, Christmas tree lighting. Uh, around Thanksgiving, so they wanted me to bring this up tonight and let everybody know. And they want to have hot chocolate, they want to break the uh. So like association in town council, so. Just an idea. I'll second that.
Okay, now we will open it up to the audience. Abby's got her hand up, okay, is it about reach? No, okay, it's it's a, it's a comment of a public beach. And I don't drive by and see this, but Guy evidently you do. Are the horses damaging the trees? The bark on the trees?
So yes, they are, um, Scott Schwartz, the county park superintendent, Scott, he about that, uh, watching about the view of this plant is to. Or what he's thinking about doing is. Putting a railing around the trees and probably having the railing concreted into the ground, but he's not sure. That's what he's going to do, but he is aware of the trees, he knows they're being damaged, and he is. Working on the way to. Leaviate the problem. So that'll be up to them with the county to determine what they plan to do.
And Chris, you might want to let him know, because the conservancy might have some ideas too.
Okay.
So from a, maybe just a parent, I don't know, protection of the trees.
He's aware of it.
Thank you, Chris. Anybody, yes, Jim?
Here's a couple items, uh, one, Nathan. Uh, Chris, when you're talking about familiar batteries. What was the total on that? A hundred and ninety dollars? It was almost a thousand dollars?
Yes.
Uh, two. The two of them. Finally, you.
Okay, uh. I would suggest that maybe you go to Cameron's Foundation or some of the nonprofit foundations in town. Um, a lot of them will replace batteries or give to fibrillators, especially if it's for the public, for the town, police department and others, uh. So they they like to make sure that from a healthcare perspective. Those go out and often times they're free, so either the battery replacement or if we need an additional one around town, it could be a resource as well.
They'll three years go out and replace them, then they weren't. Or they were putting in a fact, then they started doing it again, you know, and then they check this out, because they check class time.
I don't know, but you know, part of you guys is foundation, Luther has a foundation, there's a lot of different uh healthcare organizations.
Something that Nathan, you you could have Jen call and check or.
And I wanted to say, I saw a bulletin board that people were talking about getting fibrillators for the island. And we already have one at the yacht club. Maybe, you know, just other places around the lake where people.
Yeah, so this is something we can all kind of. Well, all in time, any healthcare organization is having through their foundations to get. Fibrillators or better places. You know, we give the conservancy and give them a suggestion that Jen just gave, if you can run that through it, because that will come in the iron room. Yeah, they could get a free one out there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, uh, Chris, anything about. I can't, anything about scooters? Or motorized vehicles, we have a number of these little mini scooters that are going up and down the road. I tell you, more than twenty-five mile an hour. So I mean, is there anything, the motorized scooters, I mean, depending on.
Kind of a dark sticker, probably not that they have that a uh, that people like registration on them. Uh, all the ones around the lake, I that I've seen, I don't have them because they. Stop them, they don't.
Okay.
Uh, so those, they kind of like a. We have quite a few in there, right? I don't have my whole move, that's motorized scooters.
Yeah.
It's not really talk about all the time, so the other ones never really is. Uh, as far as psychedelics or bicycles and so.
Those that look like a. Look like the old, uh. Just a board with a handle on it.
Yeah, I would get lucky, there's no, those statues say.
I'm worried somebody's gonna get hurt, quite honestly.
And that's, I just wondered if there's anything.
Is there an opportunity to potentially ban? Uh, horses. Horse traffic within the time clearing. Results on the issue. I know. What, what's that? Well, we can't, we can't require. That it's clean, we can't require that it be cleaned up, but can you ban?
And so it's public roadway.
Okay.
Banning somebody who was using the public roadway, kind of, that would be discrimination. In that communities.
Yes, or you think of the road for its intended purposes?
They can catch us on the roads.
Well. Great. Anything else from the public?
I just, yeah, I go with the incident, oh, the law was created. On information there and. Bring diligently to get those planes ready and get solid estimate for the applications.
Excellent, thank you. It's that, oh, Kathy. It's going to be.
It's coming from.
Mary Ann Park.
John. Seven seventy to the east, all air ground. I don't watch. And outer ground background.
President, are you giving me the? Oh, okay, so then I will entertain a motion for adjourned. I will entertain a motion. Here, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor signify by saying I. Hearing none, motion carries. To everybody. That was a free trial for next month.
I just don't believe work. In all situations. As I lead the V H L. It's a long trip, I enjoy if you did. I got one looks, yeah, we have. Green, my, my stamp, we're gonna use that. And they're kind of have a place in this part, that's a series.
Or, okay, that's a third.
Yeah, but actually, I remember these, you had a share. Okay. That those are capital damage part of the lot. Right, so. They just don't want to, not fix it up, that's right. Thing about. Yeah, but you know, hey. Problem there, that makes fun. If he is. Nice, uh, letter. This part's work. I heard, I heard, I was like, oh, man. When that, I thought he'd be like, see the post, but really, I just. Twice, this is kind of shit, that's. It's funny, it's a free standing over and teaching those log or. It's salaries, I order, you only have to sit throughout the hour. I'm sad there is the time, so. You can time share, we got a deal for you. I mean. Very first, uh.
Young man?
Yes, sir. I appreciate it. Still standby and.
You guys, well, um, right now.
Everything's fine.
Being holding from my perspective.
I'm working on the contracts. Uh, we might talk, yes. Two issues outstanding right now.
Discuss here, a month ago, yeah, outside in.
They sign it, you want to initial it or sign. Working through that and then also discussing from a trade standpoint. Cause then they say.
Don't have many, at least the back here.
Yeah, buying ten from two.
So that track line, hit the level.
Yeah, yeah. And there's a couple of interest.